Good evening and welcome to the Select Board Meeting for March 5, 2024. I am Eric Eldridge, the Chair. The following meeting is being recorded and broadcast by Tinsborough Media. The meeting is available through our local cable access channels on Comcast and Verizon FiOS and is a live stream on our website, www.tinsboroughma.gov. A recording of this meeting will be available through the video-on-demand portion of our website. Open meeting laws require that any member of the audience who intends on recording either video or audio, so declare that now. Seeing none? After instruction from the State Fire Marshal and the Tinsborough Fire Chief, in the event of an emergency, there is an exit directly across from me at the rear of the room and one to my left. With that, I ask everyone who can to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I will start with Board Introductions. To my left.
Good evening, Jacqueline Schnackert, Executive Assistant.
Good evening, Mike Moran, Vice Chair.
Good evening, Katerina Kalabokas.
Good evening, Colin Loizel, Town Manager.
Good evening, Kat Foster, Assistant Town Manager.
Okay, we have an action-packed agenda. The Select Board is going back to school. We get a lot of school presentations today. We are going to move the Town Manager's Report down into the new business area after the school presentations. We'll try to get, I know there's a lot of folks here in the audience, we'll try to get everybody in and listen to and business-conducted. So with that, can we start with some meeting minutes?
I move that the Select Board approve the regular session meeting minutes for March 11, 2024.
Mr. Chair, I second that.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? That carries 3-0-0.
I move that the Select Board approve but not release the executive session meeting minutes for March 11, 2024.
Mr. Chair, I second that.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? That carries 3-0-0. Okay, citizen and business time. I don't think that we had anybody approach us, but does anybody, any citizens wish to speak? Seeing none. Why don't we go right into the library update? If you want to come up to the table here and, do we have a presentation or is it, she's just going to talk through it?
I was just going to talk through it.
Outstanding, I love it.
So, thank you, I'm Kathy Groundy, the Library Director, and I'd like to introduce our Assistant Director, Chance Lee Joyner, if you haven't had a chance to meet him. And thank you for inviting us to present on a few items going on in the library right now. First of all, I wanted to make sure that everyone was aware that we have a Library of Things. This is a special collection of different items, non-traditional lending items such as gadgets, instruments, and electronics. This collection helps the library fulfill our mission to support the educational and recreational needs of our community in a way that goes beyond the traditional book. And so what we're passing out right now is the full list of what is included in the collection. The Library of Things also helps us narrow the digital divide experienced by members of our community by providing access to Chromebooks and hotspots. Our four hotspots are constantly in use and are our most popular item in this collection. So we're very excited to be able to provide that to our community. Our newest addition to this collection was a generous donation from a community member, and it's a VR headset. And I've asked Chance to briefly describe what that is, but this is something you can check out with your library card.
Yes, so this is the MetaQuest 2 VR headset. Raise your hand if you've had one of these on your heads before. Okay, you know how fun it is. So, you know, the library's a great place for education enrichment and entertainment, and I think the VR headset is a great opportunity for all of those things. It gives people the opportunity to try it out before they invest in one at home. And so we have this preloaded with some games and activities that people can enjoy at home. It's perfect, safe, and fun for ages 13 and up. And even though you're gaming most of the time, it still promotes activity and it can help hone some fine motor skills as well with the different things that you do in the virtual environment.
Excellent. And is that ready now, Chance, or is that about to be ready?
This should be ready hopefully by the end of the month.
Okay, so it's forthcoming. So I wanted to let you all be aware of that. Secondly, I would like to invite everyone to the library's Solar Eclipse Event that will be on Monday, April 8, from 2:30 to 4:00 p.m. Weather-dependent, of course, hopefully we'll have good weather. And it'll be at the Sherburne Nature Center at 46 Coburn Road. And we wanted to provide you all with a pair of solar glasses in the hopes that you could attend and join us. Should be a great event. I think we're close to 100 registrants already when I checked.
Wow.
Yeah, so it should be a great event. Finally, I just wanted to talk about some legislation that's in front of the Mass Legislature regarding libraries that have to do with purchasing fair use practices. As you know, we purchase books and we also purchase eBooks and streaming audios and movies. And the usage of that is skyrocketing. Although our print continues strong, the usage of eBooks is skyrocketing, and the cost is not compatible or comparable. So we can purchase a regular print book for about $20. We get up to a 41% discount off what you would get if you went to the store and purchased it yourself. We own that book, we purchase it, it sits on the shelf until usage drops to the point or our space limits causes us to remove that from the collection. With the digital content, not all content is available to us to purchase. Some of the publishers hold monopolies and do not open that up to the library. So, just so people know, when they come in and ask for a book and we can't get it, that is possibly one reason. Another reason is the majority of the items we cannot purchase. We can only license for one or two years at a higher cost. So an eBook's average price is about $65 for a, unusual, for two years. Audiobooks are about $95 apiece. And this causes us to be able to purchase less with the same amount of money than we can with print, which increases the hold times and stretches our budget quite a bit. So the legislation in front of the Mass Legislature right now is looking at consumer protection laws and requesting the Legislature to look at allowing libraries to participate in a more level playing field with the different companies, vendors, and publishers. I have an update on that legislature, legislation tomorrow, so I can send out any information that I get from that or if you're interested in contacting our reps to show your support because we need to get those prices down so that we're paying a more fair rate and providing the services that our community is asking for. One other note on that, it also explains why if you're reading Harry Potter and all of a sudden Book Four out of all the books isn't there, it's because it was a license. It wasn't that we didn't purchase it, the license has expired, so we're constantly having to purchase those books over and over again at that 65 about price level. So I just wanted to share that with you, and I'll be happy to forward any of that legislative information to you and contacts that you can help us reach out and get our prices down. Any questions on any of that?
I'll open it up to the Board for questions.
I don't have any questions, but if, actually, if somebody wanted to find this list of all the different things that you have in the Library of Things, where would they go?
Yep, they can go to our website, and I believe it's under Materials. There's a drop-down menu at the top of the page.
Okay, and I just wanted to highlight a few here because they're very untraditional, right? Which people might think of. So just to maybe elaborate a little bit, looking down quickly on their Library of Things, of course, they have actual game kits like Bocce Games or Pickleball or things like that, but they also have different electronics, hand lettering kits, a laminator, they've got a rock mining kit, so it's absolutely something I think that everybody should check out. And I see why you call it Library of Things.
Yes, absolutely. I'm always open to suggestions or donations to the collection. It's an evolving, rotating collection, so I would like to share that as well. So, thank you.
Of course.
Yeah, and the website is www.tynglib, T-Y-N-G-L-I-B dot org.
Yes, thank you so much.
Mr. Moran, any questions?
I don't have any questions. I just know that from my Amazon subscription, we get the eBooks, and so I know it's a lot cheaper, and I wonder if that would be an innovation that Amazon could do for libraries.
Amazon is actually a monopoly that does not play well with libraries. They intentionally embargo books. So for example, people will see that there's a really popular book on Amazon, and when you look at the publisher name, you wouldn't realize it's actually owned by Amazon, it's a subsidiary of Amazon. Amazon will block because they were trying to force people to purchase Amazon subscriptions. Yeah, so, and not everybody can afford an Amazon subscription even though it seems like a relatively low amount, so.
I just don't know if like, they had something specific where they could get a subscription at the library, and then you can go in there and listen to the books on a headset or something, or wireless Bluetooth.
Amazon will not allow us to do that, yeah. No, it's great, it's great.
Highlighting that for a comment.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And what's the legislation? Do you know whether it's an House or a Senate-sponsored bill? What's, do you know what the number is?
I don't have the number of the bill.
No problem.
But I can send that out.
Yeah, we'll want to get that out. We'll make sure that we'll make that available for people because I do think it's important for people, the Board of Library Trustees invited me to learn a lot more about this a few weeks back, and that was one of the reasons why, because I think that there are a lot of people who appreciate and utilize the library resources, but I think it could be even more. There are folks that don't tap into it because they don't know, and I do think that the libraries, because we're part of, you know, around the state, we tap into those things, and the challenges that the libraries are facing because of some of these things can be helped by legislation. And I think it's important for residents and, you know, voters understand that these types of things are happening, and it, you know, it does impact the local community. So I really appreciate you coming in. I thought it was important for people to understand what the library does. I know my wife is going to be there on Wednesday for the photo-scanning workshop or whatever.
Oh, excellent, yes.
So.
We have lots of new things, whether it's photo-scanning, digital scanning, we have this brand-new, it's called a memory station, that allows you, if you just bring in your photos, your documents in a USB drive, it will not only digitize up to 10 photos at a time, but you can record your little story with the photo and put it in who it was, all of that right into the photo. And so if you're interested in that, reach out to us, and we're doing one-on-one trainings right now. So, yeah, thank you for mentioning that.
Yeah, I know that, I see it on Facebook and some of the groups, people say, oh, you know, what do you do if I want to digitize this or do these things? And people don't know where to start, and it might be that a really good place to start would be with the library.
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
Anything else? I appreciate you coming in, thank you.
Thank you so much for having us.
Thank you for having us.
Appreciate it.
Excellent, okay. And can you not wear the glasses, let's not wear the glasses during tonight? All right, so now, why don't we go to the public hearing? This is a transfer application, on-premise, on-premise all alcohol license and Wednesday, weekday slash Sunday entertainment and common vicular license for the club at 1:30 Frost Road. Do we, you want to open the public hearing for us?
I move that the Select Board open the public hearing and waive the reading of the hearing notice and the legal ad.
Mr. Chair, I second that.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Carries 3-0-0. Public meeting is open. Who is Jackie? I should know better.
Okay. Included in your packet this evening is an application for the transfer of the all-alcohol on-premise liquor license, the common vic license, weekday and Sunday entertainment license issued to the club at 1:30 Frost Road. The applications seek to transfer from the Club Inc. to Top Clubs Inc. with a change of manager from Robert Copelman to Kirk Post. Although adult entertainment is not permitted under our current zoning bylaws in a residential zone such as Frost Road, Massachusetts General Law provides that any pre-existing nonconforming use shall continue to be permitted unless the use is discontinued for a period of two years, at which time the current zoning would apply. This use existed at this location before the current zoning was adopted, and as such is permitted until it's discontinued for two years as confirmed by the Building Commissioner who serves as our zoning enforcement officer. The applications are merely for a transfer of license, the premises and operations will remain the same. Please note that per discussions with the applicant's attorney, the Sunday hours will remain the same as they currently are, 1:00 p.m. to 2:00 a.m. A request for comment was sent to the departments having jurisdiction, and there were no adverse comments. The Board of Health noted that food permits are not transferable, and the applicant is aware they will need to apply for new permits.
Excellent, thank you for the background. We have some folks here. Mr. Nikosia, you want to introduce yourself and both parties and?
Yes, thank you.
See if there's anything you'd like to add.
Jackie actually did an excellent job, so I'll just push it to a vote. No, I'm kidding. So for the record, Attorney Pete Nikosia on behalf of the applicant, Top Clubs Inc., I have with me the chief cook and bottle washer, sole principal, sole stockholder, and proposed licensed manager Kirk Post. I also have Robert Copelman, who is the existing manager of the Club Inc., the current operator in the audience today. So as Jackie had aptly pointed out, we're here for a transfer of the all-alcoholic consume-on-premises license along with the common victualers, the weekday entertainment, and the weekend entertainment licenses. Nothing is changing in terms of operations. There's going to be no physical changes to the structure. As part of this transfer process, there are no changes in use that are taking place, there are no changes in hours. It is business as usual as currently licensed. So I believe the hours of operation on the licenses are 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m. Monday through Saturday, and then 1:00 p.m. to 2:00 a.m. on Sunday. That will not change. The type of entertainment which is offered, including, you know, music, the nude dancing, and the other entertainment aspects that are listed on the license will all continue. Food service will continue. Realistically, what has happened is what happens a lot of times in these long, these businesses of longevity, the owners decide to move on with life. And Robert Copelman has been a great operator of this business for the 12 or 13 years. He's been operating it. He's been a very responsible operator of these licenses, and I think he just feels it's time to do other things. So Mr. Copelman is still going to, for the time being, remain the owner of the real estate and is leasing the real estate to Mr. Post under his corporate operations to run the business and go from there, really. Mr. Post is a very established businessperson. We give a lot of his background information as part of the application paperwork. He does have experience in owning and operating this type of establishment. I do reference the location. He has excellent experience in operating an establishment that holds a liquor license. He well knows, and he was well-versed from me again, that these licenses are privileges and not rights, and he's very familiar with the Chapter 138 and all of the attendant local regulations and laws that apply to these licenses in terms of being a responsible operator, handling the responsible service of alcohol. He is actually very familiar with this establishment. He has a contracting background as well. He was actually the contractor that has performed, I think, the yeoman's portion of the renovations on this project since 2012 for Mr. Copelman when he took over. So he's familiar with the business operations specifically through those activities as well. So he has had an excellent reputation in all of the business that he's run. Mr. Copelman has had an excellent reputation in the 12 years that he's been operating the establishment, and Mr. Post certainly looks to continue that good reputation in town in operating as a responsible business owner. So the package that we submitted is pretty robust in terms of the application materials, all of the entity materials, the transactional documents that accompany this transaction. Got a copy of the lease in there as well. So we're looking for the approval of not only the transfers but also the appointment of the manager, and we're also looking for a pledge of the license because as part of the financing, it is seller financing by Mr. Copelman as part of this transaction. So part of the collateral for security, you know, for the loan, is that the license is pledged to the seller during the period of the loan. And then once the loan is paid off, then obviously the, you know, that pledge will extinguish. It's not dissimilar to, you know, any type of conventional financing where a bank seeks a pledge of a license as part of a restaurant or a bar or an establishment. It's, but in Massachusetts, to be able to perfect your security interest in a license, it has to be approved by the local licensing authority and the ABCC. It's not a situation where we can just sign off on a mortgage, record a UCC filing at the Division of Corporation and have it perfected. By statute, we have to also go through this process as well. So that is in front of you as well. Other than that, you know, we're here to answer any questions that you might have, but it's business as usual, just with a new face.
Excellent. Before I open it up to the Board, is there anybody from the public who wishes to speak or ask questions relative to this? Seeing none, I will open it up to the Board. Any questions?
I don't have any questions, as long as, you know, the representations, I think, answer all the questions that I have. Nothing is really changing. It's a transfer of license from one to the other, right? Same as usual. I think that that satisfies.
That's correct.
Does Mr. Post want to add anything?
Thank you all for your time. I look forward to getting this transferred.
Yeah, I mean, you answered all my questions as far as the hours. I had noted that it was different in the application than what we had, and we will address that in the motion.
Yeah, I think I replicated the Sunday hours from the prior application and not from the license itself. So I did already notate for the file that, you know, was stipulating that the Sunday hours are 1:00 p.m. to 2:00 a.m.
Yep, yeah, so we'll address that in the motion. There's no changes in what's happening other than that, which is, those are my big concerns. Nothing changing in the building as far as layout or any of those things materially changing.
And to the extent that we had to do that, there would be another permitting process for that.
Yep. So I have no further questions, so I guess we can close the public hearing?
I move that the Select Board close the public hearing.
I second that.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? That carries 3-0-0. Deliberation? Any questions, comments within us? Then I will entertain a motion.
I move that the Select Board approve the transfers of the on-premise all-alcohol license, common vicular license, and weekday and Sunday entertainment licenses issued to the Club Inc. to Top Clubs Inc., and the manager be changed from Robert Copelman to Kirk Post with hours amended to remain as they currently are on Sunday from 1:00 p.m. to 2:00 a.m. and approve the pledge as requested.
Mr. Chair, I second that.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? That carries 3-0-0.
Appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you, good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, new business. Let's do the change of manager request for the American Legion, Post 247, 80 Pawtucket Boulevard. Is this you, Jackie, again?
This would be me again.
Thank you so much.
Included in your packet this evening is an application from the American Legion, Post 247, for a change of manager at the facility on 80 Pawtucket Boulevard from John F. Burke to John Taylor. We have requested comments from the departments having jurisdiction in this area and have received no adverse comments. The facility remains closed at this time while they complete repairs from a fire. However, they are hoping to open shortly. This type of application request does not require a formal hearing. As such, the butters notifications or legal notices were not necessary.
Would you, gentlemen, the applicants, do you like to introduce yourselves and add anything?
My name is John Taylor. I'm the, hopefully, new operations manager for the American Legion.
I'm Jim Lawler. I'm the finance officer for the Post.
Excellent, welcome. Anything to add? Just.
Jackie has been amazing through this entire process, and I think.
She is amazing.
Adding anything would just detract from her magnificence.
She's unbelievable, unbelievable.
Check is in the mail.
I agree.
Do I have any questions, comments from the Board relative to the change of manager?
Excited to see it open again.
Yeah.
Yes.
Any timing updates for us?
Where fingers crossed for Memorial Day weekend, and that would be very appropriate.
Yes, be outstanding. Okay, well, with that, I will entertain a motion.
I move that the Select Board approve the application for the change of manager for the Robert Pillater American Legion Post 247 located at 80 Pawtucket Boulevard as presented.
Mr. Chair, I second that.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Carries 3-0-0. Good luck.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Jackie. Appreciate your time.
Much appreciate yours, thank you.
All right, we are going to do some budget presentations, so we're gonna, we're all going back to school. So we'll start with Ms. Jill Davis and Mr. Michael Knight from the Great Allo Technical School. If you could introduce yourselves, and then we'll let you take it away with your presentation.
Sure, good evening, my name is Jill Davis. I'm the assistant, I'm the superintendent-director of Great Allo Technical High School, and with me this evening, I have our school business administrator, Mr. Michael Knight. And we'll be presenting Great Allo Technical High School's FY25 budget. Okay, I'm not going to look that way because I have Vertigo, so it.
Oh, yeah.
To go back and forth, so I'm just going to focus.
That's.
And I'll queue whoever I need to queue to move to the next slide. So I'd like to begin by saying that Great Allo Technical High School's FY25 budget, by informing everyone that the budget was developed based on the Governor's House budget proposal and data and input from our school administrators, our teachers, our parents, and community partners, and that the budget is centered around improving student achievement in order to develop confident learners and skilled workers. The Massachusetts House, Senate, and Governor approved a change in state funding in 2015, and this bill as we know it is called the Student Opportunities Act, and the act invested $1.5 billion into schools over the next six years. The bill is aimed at tackling inequities in education specifically for districts like Great Allo Technical High School with higher percentages of students that are low-income English-language learners, otherwise known more recently as multilingual learners, and special education students in order to close the achievement gap. Currently, about $700,000 of the current 2.6% budget increase, or about one-half of the net school spending amount, is focused on the Student Opportunity Act. Our SOA plan is focused on three main priorities, adding additional mental health and SEL support, expanding engagement initiatives between school and home, and PD for staff and resources for academic advancement for our students. We received a $421,908 increase to our Chapter 78, bringing our Chapter 78 total to $37,647,191. And the budget presentation before you this evening has a total budget of $57,981,480, which includes more than a $1,477,455 additional spending or a 2.6% increase over this year's budget total. I'm going to move to the next slide to talk about the foundation budget. The Governor's proposed budget is a direct result of the revised foundation budget formula, which reflects an increased per pupil expenditure to add additional funding to schools with high numbers of ELLs fed in low-income students as Great Allo Technical High School. Just to talk a little bit about those base rates. The base rate for a vocational student The base rate for a vocational student was raised to $16,860.33. This is an increase of $386.32. Even though there was a rate increase, the rate increase is down from last year. For special education students, we receive $31,333.62, which is a $590.40 increase from last year. As again, even though it's a rate increase, the rate increase is still down from last year. For ELO students, we receive $3,221.08, which is an increase of $342.42. Again, even though this is a rate increase this year, the rate increase is still down from last year. For the low-income categories that were added in FY '21 and that continue to exist and be maintained in the FY '25 budget, currently, Greater Lowell Technical High School has 56.2% low-income students that would qualify us to fall into the low-income category 10, for which we receive $7,163.59, which is an increase of $623.06. A rate increase again, but down from last year. Any questions on the foundation budget raise per pupil for, for each student?
Any questions?
I'm going to move to the next slide, which is the overview of foundation budget for Greater Lowell Tech. Based on the new rates of per pupil expenditures set by the state, and our current enrollment or foundation budget increased by $1,362,954, which is a 2.61% increase over this year's budget. Again, as I said, we are in year four of a six-year SOA plan. We should expect roughly the same budget increase over the next two years for SOA. The $1,362,954, or the 2.6% increase is all net school spending required funding that must be met each year. Any questions on the foundation budget?
None. No?
Moving to the next slide.
So the revenue that supports this budget for FY '25 from the schools is gonna come from, I guess, kind of three buckets of sourcing. The first is excess and deficiency. We're gonna be using $200,000 of that, and that's similar to free cash for a regional school district. It's our savings, so to speak. And there are items that we want to spend or that we need to spend on for the schools, such as Medicaid claiming and capital purchases that are not net school spending eligible, so we cannot use our other funding sources for that. So we have to dip into the excess and deficiency a little bit every year. That's a level from last year. The next is the assessments to our members' communities. So our member communities are assessed at the minimum local contribution, which is set at that net school spending level that Ms. Davis just went through. And then, we have to add the addition of transportation and debt service, which aren't net school spending eligible items, broken down to the communities as well. So on overall basis, we're assessing our communities $18,634,289, which is an increase of $755,564 over the previous year. If you play a little bit of slide back and forth with me here, if you go to the previous slide, you'll see that the net school spending minimum local required contribution increase was $941,046. So we were able to offset that by recognizing more transportation reimbursement revenue as well as a reduction in our debt every year as we pay it off to hope to not pass on as much of an increase to our member communities as was dictated by the state budget. And then, finally, our revenue comes directly from the state through the form of Chapter 70 and Transportation Reimbursement, Chapter 71. And our budget in that area is $39,147,191, an increase of $721,908, year-over-year, giving us a total budget of $57,981,480, an increase of $1,477,454 annually.
Questions on that?
Moving to the next slide.
Enrollment?
And the, Ms. Davis mentioned previously, the foundation enrollment, which obviously drives the biggest portion of this budget. In Tingsborough this year, we're actually down four students in the foundation enrollment. That's not to say that we're down four students at the school, but foundation enrollment is really, the way to think about it, is that all the students that were financially responsible for from the town of Tingsborough, so that would include kids that chose to go to other vocational schools because they couldn't get into Greater Lowell, or for whatever reason, we didn't maybe have the program they were interested in. We also have our adult day and evening licensed practical nursing program as well, which is included in that foundation enrollment. So at Greater Lowell Tech this year, we were actually down six students from Tingsborough in the high school, up four practical nursing students, and then down two choice students for a net of minus four students on a year-over-year basis. Go to the next slide. So the, I guess, a little bit of the paradox then is if we're down four students, why was the minimum local contribution up? And that has more to do with the way the state is looking at the assessment to the member communities. Currently, Tingsborough is targeted for a 77.93% payment of their per-student amount in the Chapter 70 formula, but you were only assessed at about 68% last year. So the state tries to move you to that target level, which is set based on your property and income wealth of your community, but they don't do it all at once. They're not gonna hit you with, you know, 10% increase to that number all overnight. So what they do is if you're over 7% low on that number, they'll move you an increment of 2% on an annual basis. And if you're with, under that 7%, 7.5% threshold, they move you 1% toward that increment on an annual basis. So unfortunately, there's, there's still quite a ways to go to get you to that 77% target, 77.93% target the state set. So you'll likely, even with enrollment remaining static, see increases to this minimum local contribution annually. And then, I guess, like we mentioned earlier, we offset some of that by looking at recognizing more revenue on the transportation side. Luckily, the state has been generous on the transportation reimbursement line and been able to maintain that. And then, as we pay off our debt service annually, there's a little bit less that has to come to the town.
Any questions on that? We love Chapter 70. It's so, it's so easy to follow.
To figure out.
The calculations make so much sense.
I'm here to be the shepherd for you. Chapter 70, if you will. Not much for farming communities myself, but here we are. So when we look at the expenditure that's going to support this budget, obviously, it matches to our revenue increase, that $1,477,454. Being net school spending required, the biggest portion of this is always gonna live in our instruction. That's where our teachers get paid from, school materials, equipment, those things get purchased. So even though we do, we did have a robust increase to salaries and staffing, $700,000 normally doesn't do that on an annual basis for us in a $30 million instructional line. We are, we were able to reduce the amount of equipment in some of the other areas of our spending in that instructional line to help maintain a budget that's gonna fit to the state's model. Some of our other big drivers across the board, our health insurance is obviously a big one, I think, for everyone. Every municipality, that's a tough cost to battle. We've been doing very well in a healthcare trust that we belong to, but it does still tend to increase on an annual basis for us. Beyond that, there's, there's really not a whole lot that's really all that interesting in here. We saw a significant change to Chromebooks last year. It seems like the low-end Chromebook that you used to get that was kind of a throwaway has sort of gone by the wayside, and they're making them more robust. You know, things that come with eight gigs of RAM, those types of things that are, you know, a little bit more robust than back when I first started getting Chromebooks. They were really cheap, really slow, not super, super performers, but they've sort of moved that up. And then, utilities costs, I'm sure the, the town has had this as well. We saw an electric rate when I got into the district about five years ago at nine cents a kilowatt hour. The best we could renegotiate for over the last year was 11.27. So that makes up a significant portion when we get a big 500,000 square foot facility. I think that was about a $200,000 move.
We're familiar with those challenges.
Yeah. Nothing exciting.
Any, any questions on those?
And the overall summary, I'll start with our expenditures. Our operating budget at $53,784,885, with transportation costs of $2,927,000, a debt service of $1,269,595, leaving us a total budget, expenditure budget of $57,981,480. As far as our revenue sources, our minimal local contribution from our towns and city is $15,937,694. Our transportation assessment of $1,427. Our debt assessment of $1,269,595, leaves us with a total assessment of $18,634,289. Our Chapter 78, $37,647,191. Our Chapter 71 transportation aid, $1,500. Our excess and deficiency, $200,000, with a total budget of $57,981,480. So as you can see, our revenue supports our expenditures for a balanced budget.
I'll open it up to the board for questions. I don't have any questions.
I don't have any questions. I really like how you laid it out. It was easy to follow as you went through. Thank you very much.
The only question I have is, can you give me your crystal ball and tell me where things are trending between state aid and, and your expenses? And what should we be doing in Tingsborough to plan for, for these types of things? Because I know Colin deals with it during budget time. It's like, I think it might be here. Just, are there, are there, are there, like, the, the Chapter 71, you know, we've got the millionaire's tax, those things that we're all trying to figure it out. But I didn't know whether there were certain things that you're seeing that we should be aware of so that we can start to plan our budgets, you know, going forward. Are you seeing, is it gonna be similar to what it's been over the last few years? Do you see anything radically changing?
It's gonna be less. What we're getting is less than it was over the last few years, so I think you have to prepare for that.
Couple of interesting things going on. So that SOA plan does end in two years, so I know it's tough to start planning for FY ' '28, I think is the first year without it. That, in that year, we should see a significant decrease, at least from the Greater Lowell Tech side. I anticipate that at that point, we'll be living probably more on the inflationary factor, and that was kind of a big surpriser for us this year, was Chapter 70 not only does those incremental increases to the categorical expenditure, or not categorical expenditure lines, but the, the categories of like vocational students worth X dollars, special ed X dollars, low-income X dollars. The inflation-
Even though they were increased, they were still less than they have been almost half.
Yeah, we, we, they only used an inflationary factor of 1, or 1.35%, I think, last year. I think most of us can recognize the reality was, was not 1.35. I'll say, I didn't recognize a 1.35% reality increase on a year-over-year basis. So I think in the, in the two years out, you'll probably see a lower assessment coming from Greater Lowell Tech, which might be good news for you guys. Makes things a little bit tougher for us on the inside. That's when we're gonna have to get a little bit more creative and really start tightening the belt on pretty much everything. Not that we didn't this year, but in years out, I believe that's gonna be a substantial issue. And outside of that, I haven't really caught wind of much legislation that's gonna make a substantive change for us. I have seen some things presented about not capping inflation and/or making up for lost inflation, because even though the last two years, the inflation numbers were produced at, I think, like 9.8 and 8-point-something percent. Chapter 70 caps at 4.5%. So in the years when we see really high inflation, we never achieved that really high inflation on the school side, and in the years when that drops down, we certainly drop down with it. So there has been a push. I don't know if it's gained any real traction, but recently, they were asking superintendents and business managers to support a push that would make up for that, those back charges. Obviously, that would make a lot of revenue change to schools, but I think introducing as much, the huge dollar figures they were talking about all at once and something like that might, it might have unintended consequences, as the SOA sort of did. It was a great thing. It, it increased the amount that we have to spend on students. However, it didn't come all from the state. It came from the taxpayers. So that made things a little bit difficult. When everyone looked at the bill, it made sense. It was a good idea. It supported students, which everyone wants to do. Unfortunately, they weren't, I don't know that it was publicized really well that it was gonna be coming from taxpayers.
Yeah, and, and I sometimes ask people with the crystal ball, and I know that there's no right answer to that. It's more just trying to get a feel for some of those things that, that we should be planning for relative to the tech. So I don't have any other questions. I think it's, it's all there in the numbers. And certainly, certainly appreciate you coming in. Good partner in, in the community. It's great to have a vocational technical school in our town. That's, I mean, we're lucky to have that there, so we're fortunate that you folks are here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. The next one we're gonna do, Dr. Flanagan, and are you gonna have friends?
Mr. Messina.
All right, Mr. Messina.
Money man.
It said school committee. I was hoping it'd be Mr. Messina anyway.
He actually said friends, so I'm not sure.
You don't ever talk money without Mr. Messina.
Right.
So thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. We appreciate that. This has turned into an annual thing, coming to present the process, how we got there. Much like you heard from, from Greater Lowell, it is a collaborative process that begins in November. We work with our administrative team. And one of the things that we talk about is, we're not playing at fitness. We don't pick things up and put things down. We really look internally. We reflect about what our needs are, what our wants are, and what's best for kids. So we have those conversations for a few months, and we get to what a level service budget would be. And it's at that point that I come knocking on Colin's door to say, hey, can we sit? Can we talk? Where are we? And we spend the next two months, myself, Mr. Messina, Kat, and Colin, and Dave, having this conversation, and really coming to our understanding. So when we got to our level service budget, we recognized that we had, it was, it was 1.2 million. That's what we needed to, to provide the same services for kids and meet their needs. With the 2.7% increase from the town that we're committed to, that's a $616,000 increase. So we had about a $560,000 problem or issue. Fortunately, we were able to be very creative with the Special Education Stabilization Fund, we hope, and that really helps us. And it helps us a lot, because as you just heard in that presentation about the Increase of Student Opportunity Act and the funding, I'll remind you, as, as we talked about this last year, Tingsborough is one of 130 communities that receives $0 for the Student Opportunity Act. So, so we are in a difficult spot financially, and I think if we go to the next slide, I just, one more, sorry. You know, we're not alone. If you've had the opportunity to, to look at the Lowell Sun or read the news or see the newspapers at all recently, it's real. Budget crunch is hitting public schools very differently than it's hitting vocational schools. It's, it's, it's part of the funding mechanism. It's part of the issue. It's part of the problem. But these slides are presenting, this one, and if you go to the next one, Colin, it's just, it's just a snapshot of information so the community can really understand. This was a slide that I presented at the Mass, Merrimack Valley Legislative Committee breakfast that we had two weeks ago. So 37 districts in the Merrimack Valley invited every senator and every representative in the area to come to breakfast so that we could really talk about our needs and the legislation that's out there and the impact that will have to the boots on the ground. So I had the opportunity to, to share one town story, and I, I shared our story, obviously. In 10 years, in 10 years, our Chapter 78 funding has gone up by 8.1% in 10 years. Now, enrollment's gone down by 200 students, 214 students, but our FTEs have gone down by 21.2. So Chapter 70 goes up at 8.1%. You can look at what our out-of-district tuitions went up by, 101%. Transportation, up by 63%, I believe, 60%. Regularized transportation, up by 35.3%. So, so the funding concern is real. It's not, certainly not for us wasting money or, or having positions we don't need. Chapter 70, the formula's broken. The formula doesn't- Chapter seventy, the formula's broken, the formula doesn't work. And this is the conversation we were trying to have with the legislatures last week. And I know that we have a tri board meeting coming up in a few weeks. I will certainly be bringing this slide, and I will certainly have a lot of information to share at that point. But if we don't do something to address this, you heard about the fiscal cliff, you hear about the fiscal cliff that districts are facing right now. Greater Lowell just talked about that four point eight percent increase. Well, if inflation was seven percent, you would get that back in the following year. But they changed the chapter seventy funding formula. So all districts are being impacted in that manner as well. So it's a concern. It's certainly something that we are having a conversation about at the Legislative Committee for the Mass Superintendent Association. But our legislators need to hear that. And they really need to see what the numbers are. And, you know, I was one of several districts that shared concerns and shared the impact it's having. Stephen Stone, Superintendent Drake, had shared the concerns in Drake. Jay Lang, Superintendent Chelmsford, shared his story as well. It's, we're not alone. So the legislator needs, legislature needs to step up and really address this, this mechanism, because it was developed in nineteen ninety-three. Things have changed significantly. So that's my pitch about funding in general, that, I guess it brings me back to, I'm thankful that we have a community that supports education. I'm thankful that we have administration and Board of Select Board that value and prioritize education. And I'm very thankful there was a school committee that does everything they can to advocate for the kids in Tingsboro. So that's my pitch. I'm gonna let Joe get into the real numbers, because that's what he does, so.
So, so as the superintendent mentioned, we, we did look at our initial first pass at the budget, and it was a over five percent increase. And of, of course, we knew that we were not going to present five point one percent growth to the school committee or to the select board. So knowing that we had a two point seven percent growth model, we developed a number of models. And it, I think the superintendent, myself, probably walked back and forth to each other's office a half dozen times a day, but between the two-week period of presenting that budget to presenting a two point seven percent budget. So we created a model, and this is one model that we developed. And again, with over fifteen hundred students and two hundred and forty staff people, that's over eighteen hundred moving parts. So the superintendent, myself, can sit here tonight and present this budget, it's gonna change before we open the doors. Something will, will catch us, hopefully not by surprise, but it, it's happened. And we know we may need to change something in this model. But as presented tonight, and at our public hearing tomorrow night, the budget that is up there, and I know you can't see that, presents a staff reduction of three positions from two hundred and forty-three point three staff persons to two hundred and forty point three. Salaries go up roughly six hundred thousand dollars in that model. And the rest of the department expenses, for the most part, do not change if you look at school by school and department by department. The major changes are in special education. And due to the rostering of the projected students, that number actually goes down slightly from this year. But specialized transportation, the vans, we were hit with a bit of a pricing surprise in May of last year, after this year's budget was complete. So next year's budget goes up by approximately two hundred thousand dollars for vans. The rest of the increases through expenses primarily are surrounding busing and utilities. Again, Mr. Knight mentioned about being locked in some pretty good rates. Tingsboro was in the same boat. We were locked into excellent electricity and natural gas rates that unfortunately are coming to an end in October. So we, we just recently locked into a number, but it was certainly much higher than what we're currently paying. That drove our costs up by about sixty-seven thousand dollars. So the balance of these expenses on this sheet are pretty similar to this year's budget. Go to the next slide for revenues. Again, the desire is always to present a balanced budget to the community. And what we did see in this is our grant revenue is off roughly two hundred thousand dollars. And that was anticipated due to this year being the final year that we are using our ESER grant money, which is COVID-related. And primarily, most of the revenues stayed very similar. You will see Circuit Breaker going down slightly by about a hundred and forty-three thousand dollars. And again, that's a product of the current roster. We'll probably see an uptick in that going forward. And as the superintendent mentioned, looking to increase the sped stabilization account as a last, always a last revenue source to target when the budget is being developed. Again, the volatility of this current roster, we expend the balance, the anticipated balance of stabilization with the host, the hopefulness of trying to protect the balance of the stabilization account. Finally, the school committee budget in total is a projected chapter seventy at this time. And our chapter seventy number is seven point seven million, or roughly thirty-three percent of the school committee's budget, with the balance being the projected town contribution to get, get us to that two point seven growth, as we discussed.
I think the interesting thing that Mr. Messina and I talk about frequently is, federal government, the state government, they'll pass legislation, and there'll be funding tied to that for a little bit. But then the funding goes away, the legislation does not, and the requirements do not. And that gets pushed down to the town. And we're seeing that now. We heard, we just heard it in Greater Lowell's presentation, that the assessment's going up, the state's requiring the assessment goes up. The funding's not coming with that. So again, that comes down to the community. So at some point, a bigger conversation needs to happen with people a lot smarter than me to really understand what this funding mechanism's doing. Because as, as we saw a few slides ago, public schools across the Commonwealth are facing this crunch, and it's, it's real and it's here. So with that being said, we're happy to answer any questions you may have.
So I'll open, I'll open it up. Questions? Anybody wanna start?
A couple of questions and comments, just from the previous presenter. Just a little reflection on that. When the money comes from the state, it's still taxpayer money. Right? So it's just spreading it from somewhere to somewhere, but the chapter seventy calculation is just rubbish now. And it really needs to be addressed. And I think that for our visit with Colin Gary, and I know we do this almost every year, right? I was on school committee for a bit, so I know we've asked that, the tri board meeting. Starting my third year later this year, right? We've asked this every year, to change this, and they just, they don't hear us. So I think this, this year, we have to be a little louder on asking for that.
There is specific, yeah, there's specific legislation out there. It's called the, the Promise Commission, and they're looking to, to really bring all stakeholders together, to really say, okay, ed reform happened in nineteen ninety-three. And at that point, we're talking about, you know, educating students for a twenty-first century. We're twenty-four years into a twenty-first century. It's time to revisit. It's time to, you know, set the bar a little bit higher and, and change what really is, is coming through the doors every day, so.
Exactly, so, so full, my support on that, because I think it's important to have some fairness in that calculation. That's my statement.
Anything else?
No, that's it.
I mean, keeping in mind that you guys had some pretty big challenges here, I am happily surprised at how close we are. I mean, honestly, just like you, I've been seeing these in the news, right? And knowing that tri board is coming up, I, this was something that was sitting a little bit heavy on me, right? And so I'm actually, I'm excited to talk a little bit more in detail, tri board, right? But I, I think that it's, it's very noteworthy, right, and commendable that we're looking at the numbers that we're looking at, especially with the districts around us not being quite so close.
Right. And I think that, thank you, thanks for the, the forward look ahead years ago, when we established the Special Education Stabilization Account. And, and to use that creatively over the past couple of years, it's been, it's been a savior for us. It has.
I have no questions. I know we're gonna go into it more two weeks from now. Two weeks?
Yes, two weeks. Well, we'll be here for a tri board, I think, going through the budget. So this is always a challenge, and I, and I, I know I was talking with Dr. Flanagan before we started, and I think it's important to see what's happening around us, in the communities around us, and the challenges that they face. I'm appreciative that, as a town, we've looked at how we spent some of those one-time monies, like ARPA and, and a lot of these, and didn't just go crazy with those things, because we, we knew that the money was gonna run out. And I think that that fiscal responsibility is helping us, not gonna solve our problem. It just means that we're not as close to the cliff. And I think that we've got some difficult decisions. I think there, there's some difficult decisions that you folks have already started to make. It, it's really hard when we look at our kids and say, gee, we can't spend as much on this, and I can't have as many teachers, and maybe my classroom sizes are, get affected. And they don't have access to all the things that I'd like them to have access to. But it's really hard, because we look at it across the entire town and sit there and say, yeah, we gotta make some difficult decisions in public safety, and, and the roads, and, and everything that we do. And I appreciate that, the, the way in which you guys are going about it, by sitting there saying, look, we, we agreed a little while ago, and we were talking about the school, that we've gotta be at two point seven percent. And, and two point seven, you know, people look at it and say, well, gee, that's more than the two and a half and all that. As you look at the costs that are there, it's really, really hard to get to two point seven. The, the numbers really need to be higher, and we do need to work with the, with the state. Unfortunately, we all know that the speed of government is really slow, and so we can't wait for them to fix our problem. We, we do need to make some difficult decisions so that we can make sure that we don't, you know, run into those big problems. So I'm really appreciative of the, the openness to, to look at these, these things and make the difficult decisions early on. Because I think sometimes if, some people can look at it and say, I don't wanna make that difficult decision, I'll just kick the can down the road. And what happens is, then you have a really big problem down the line. And, you know, the numbers aren't great, but they are what they are. And I, and I think that this is reasonable. And I think that's, that's all we're looking for, right? You sit there and say, yeah, there's some, there's some tough decisions that we have to make. And then, you know, I think we're gonna, we're gonna have to be creative. I, I love stabilization accounts. I sit there and save, saving for a rainy day, we're gonna run into these types of things. So we've gotta figure out, our special education costs are not gonna go down. They're, they're going up, they have been going up, and, and we have to plan for all of those types of things. So I, I, Colin and I, we talk about budget, and we talk about all those types of things. And he's like, eh, it's gonna be tough, but we got to the two point seven. And I was like, you know, I was very thankful that we got to that point, because I know how difficult it is. So thank you, you know, both, and, and working with Colin, and Kat, and everybody else, to get, to get to something that works. It's not perfect. It's, it's not what we, we'd like to spend more, right? We sit there and say, gee, I wish I had every, all the money for all of these things. And maybe if somebody wins, you know, the really big lottery, they'll donate to us, but I don't, we're not gonna wait for that either. But I appreciate that. And I think we're, I'd love to say that this is gonna be the only year. We're gonna have, this is what we've gotta do. It's been that way for a little while, so it's, it's not like it's new, and I'm, I'm glad that, you know, we have that level of experience that, that you folks have. So you, you look like you wanted to add something.
I just had one question. As you were speaking, it came back to mind. So the vans. Why are these vans so expensive? Can you elaborate on that? Are they like?
So, two different things going on. First of all, we were in a very good rate with our provider, who hadn't increased the rates for a number of years, probably five to seven years. And the, the COVID shutdowns caught up with a lot of people, and I think it caught up with transportation companies. And as they started to develop their pricing, they said, well, Tingsboro's not getting charged what they should be charging. We're not recouping our costs. So they, they did give us a three-year price model, so we can plan accordingly, but that is the cost for the seventeen vans that, that we run right at the moment. My, my soapbox answer is, every district in Massachusetts sends students to these out-of-district placements. And we're responsible as a district to arrange the transportation. And again, as the superintendent said, somebody smarter than me should probably look at this at a state level and say, why aren't the out-of-district schools arranging transportation? If we have a student on a van going to Stonem, and Chelmsford has a student on a van going to Stonem, and Groton has a student going to Stonem, that could be one van where cost sharing. But nobody's taken it to that level. We do try to find cost shares at every opportunity and.
It's done informally right now.
And informally, but if the dispatching was done at the school level rather than the district level, I think as a whole, we'd probably be saving some van money out there as, as a state.
Thank you.
That makes sense. Thank you.
So let me ask the question. Looking forward, what are the types of things? We've talked about special education stabilization and making sure that we, we keep that going. What other things do we need to be planning for, and residents should know, coming down the line, so that we can plan, so that there's not as many surprises, right? I know there's some towns that with a Prop two and a half override, that's a surprise. And what sort of things can we be doing, should we be doing, to help minimize a likelihood that we have to take that type of action?
I don't know that it's possible. I mean, I mean, I'm being honest.
That's an answer.
I mean, we've seen, you bring up that ten years trend slide, we see where it's progressing. We see the arc of, of the slope of that line. I don't know that, that it's possible. I think we're gonna have to have hard conversations. I think we're gonna have to understand that, yeah, class size could be impacted at some point down the line, potentially programming could be impacted. I don't think there's an appetite in this community to certainly increase fees on, on, on students. We've kinda moved away from that. But, you know, we're gonna do everything we can to, to protect what we have and provide what we need for our students. But the mandates are still there, the legislation's still there, so we still have to do certain things. And, and whatever the cost is, last year, OSD, the rate went up fourteen percent. There wasn't, there wasn't a superintendent who had a seat at the table, not one. And, and the special collaborative did that, OSD Operational Services Division did that. So it's, you know, I think we need, we as a, my organization, Joe's organization, I think we need to be more vocal, and we need to advocate more. But that's a terrible answer, I know, but I think that's the real answer. I really do.
So what you just said is really the starting point for that. I think it's important for residents to understand that what we have is an unsustainable model. It's trending in the wrong direction, and that many of the things that people used to have, certain fees, that, that we used to have, that we, we got, we were able to get rid of, we may have to go back to those unless things change at the state funding level, because you can't make the math work the, the way it is right now. That, you know, that the costs are just going up far more than, than the, you know, the, the funding is coming in from the state. And who bears the cost of that? Well, it's, it's the residents. So I think it's important for people to understand that the current model that we have isn't working, and that we need to make sure that our legislatures at the state level know that this is a dire problem. Or we're gonna be the ones who are, you know, dealing with the Prop two and a half override, or dealing with the fees, and, and a lot of those things, that we don't, that we know is not good. It's not good for the town, it's not good for the students. So I think it's important. Your answer is, I mean, that's the truth. And, and I think we just need to make sure that people understand that.
Yeah, and, and that we is a Commonwealth of Massachusetts issue.
Yes.
Not a Tingsboro issue. This is a, this is a bigger problem than us, and we're one of several just dealing with it.
Yep. Yep, no, that's exactly it. Other questions, comments? I'm sure we'll have some other good lively discussion in a couple of weeks at the tri board meeting, we float some of these things. But again, I appreciate the, and I'll speak for the board. We appreciate the hard work that's, that goes into doing, creating a budget that, that works, you know? It's, it's not optimal, and we're in a, in a tough situation, and I appreciate, you know, all that's been done and some of those difficult decisions. And we're gonna try to do what we can to make those things be as less, as painless as possible to keep being fiscally responsible. So thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you. Cheers. I always get riled up over Chapter 70 discussions.
Makes sense.
Oh.
Logical.
All right. Next up, Mr. Orpin, head of School Innovation Charter. Welcome again.
Thank you.
You you get to follow all the fun.
Fun just keeps going. Good evening, everyone. Thanks again for having me here to represent Innovation Academy. I do want to, I sent some information to give a little bit of background on the school, but I also want to be respectful of all your time. So I, following suit that of the previous two presentations, I am happy to sort of fast forward a a bit into the sort of like the nuts and bolts of how we're going around our budgeting. But I can certainly share, especially, I think this is the first time I've spoken with some of the folks here on the select board. So maybe I'll touch upon the Alec Lance slides here. So as you may know, we are a tuition-free public school. We're, in the eyes of the state, a regional school. So the nine districts you see are the the 10 school districts that are represented there are formerly the, in the state's eyes, the primary region we serve, although all charter schools in Massachusetts can't accept applications from anyone in the state. The other thing that's, you know, I'm often asked is in terms of enrollment, that 800 students for grades five through 12, that's a hard cap. So we are not allowed to enroll more than 800 students. If for any reason we were to over-enroll because more people accepted than we predicted, then we would not get paid for the 800 first, second, and third students. So, you know, on most years, we are close to 800, but usually fly a little bit under that. So the next couple of slides, you know, just give you a flavor of some of the bread and butter characteristics of our school, the the sort of word association that our students and families and our staff would most quickly ascribe to our schools. You know, we have a heavy emphasis on project-based curriculum instruction. You know, we really like to immerse our students and have them go deep in their work and try to replicate the most authentic, real-world experiences that they can while they're at our school. The let, next slide focuses, you know, I think another big element to our school program. We give our students a lot of opportunities to share their work in public forums. And again, one of the the biggest pieces of affirmative feedback we get from our own families is, you know, our students' abilities to speak with confidence and develop strong public speaking skills. And then next slide, you know, we are very committed and have always been committed to this ideal of developing strong community members. And so that means not only how we act and care ourselves within the school, but how we get out into the community. So, you know, being located in Tingsborough, you know, a lion's share of our community service efforts are focused immediately here in town. So you can see sort of a visual map with the little Google map bubbles that show some of the work that we've done over the course of this academic year. If you were to go to the next slide, you know, our students have done everything from create arts and crafts, thank you cards, bookmarks for the library. As the students get older, they can usually handle a little, a little bit more types of tasks outside the school. So our seventh and eighth graders, several advisory groups helped the Parks and Rec Department get ready for the Festival of Trees. So that was a a nice win-win. If you go to the next slide, one of our fall classic community service endeavors is getting out into the community and helping our seniors, who are still trying to live independently with the dreaded annual task of fall cleanups. And as noted in the slides, we're thankful for the Council of Aging to help connect us with area seniors and the Highway Department for coming by. And we gave them the addresses and they were able to come by to get the the bags of leaves. And another unique part of our school program is our juniors and seniors on the next slide participate, or many of them, about, I would say, 25 to 30% of them participate in weekly internships. Some are right next in in this very building. And again, that's just a great way to get them involved in the community and and sort of apply real-world learning experiences. So I think the next slide really is important because, as I'll show you in the following presentation, our budget is really directly aligned with whatever our enrollment is. So that, like, basically 94% of our budget is strictly a function of two things, like how many students are enrolled and what communities are they coming from. So we collect applications from students over the course of the year, like mid-October to late February. Our enrollment process is done through a blind lottery. There is no application materials. Students and families do not submit grades or conduct reports or attendance records. It's a very, it's intentionally designed at the state level to be a blind process. And then on March 1st, we take all the applications that we collect, we run them through a lottery, and then seats are given to those who end up getting the best lottery numbers. So we do all that in early March because by March 15th, there's a hard deadline where we submit estimates to the state, which the state calls like a pre-enrollment, a pre-enrollment report. And so we just list out how many students per grade, per town, we project will be attending our school next year. So the the, we've done that work, right? We're past the 15th. So if you look at this slide, the left-hand column is actual data as of like last week. So you can just see grade by grade how many actual students are enrolled from the town of Tingsborough. The right-hand column is all projections, right? So you can, I mean, right now, we are assuming that, you know, fifth graders will become sixth graders, sixth graders will become seventh graders, so on and so forth. You know, once in a while, we do get information from our families mid-year that they will not be returning next year. So for example, if you were to look at, you know, apparently a fifth-grade family has already sent us paperwork that they are not going to be returning, so that's why that sixth-grade number is a four next year. But when you add that all up, it, you know, right now, we are projecting a net increase of one more Tingsborough student. Of course, you know, a lot can change over the course of the spring, let alone the course of the summer, but that's what we are expecting. So that information is really just to help town, cities and towns plan. That does not sort of get baked into like actual billing and and, you know, tuition, tuition amounts. So the this slide here, you know, it's nice that this follows up the previous two presentations because, you know, our process is actually a little bit different, right? Like, we sort of sit in a holding pattern. The conversations between, you know, that occur in all the towns in our region are occurring, like, are we gonna have an override? What's gonna be our increase? And like, they all happen. And so the 10 districts that serve our primary region, you know, they're all having their independent, they're all making their independent decisions. And at the end of the day, we sort of wait for all of those locally-controlled decisions to occur. And then the state tells us what the ultimately, what the per pupil rate is going to be at their towns, right? And so we just have our projected enrollment of how many students are in each town. We have a on like a projected per pupil amount. And that's how we forecast our budget for next year, is just sort of combining those two. So we, it, you know, a lot of it is forecasting. There is uncertainty. If we were to have 10 more students from a different town fill, you know, from a certain town leave and 10 from another town to come in, that would all adjust, you know, sort of ultimately what our budget would be for next year. So if you look at the next slide, again, this is, this is all projected for next year, FY '25. So you can see that the the projections that we are getting from the state right now, I would say of the, of the, is there seven, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, of the eight primary districts, Littleton is not listed there. You know, each each municipality has its own projected per pupil amount. So what that does, we take that and what we project to be our percent enrollment, and then we just create a sort of a blended average of what we, what the average Innovation Academy charter school per pupil tuition number would be. Are there any questions about like that slide or the slide before? I realize I'm sort of motoring through here. Yeah, is that pretty, pretty clear? So then the final slide, if you were to go down, so this is the, you know, the budget that, you know, we did propose and actually was approved last Monday night. So just to walk you through those numbers, that's $790. Again, we have an enrollment max of 800. You know, we, just to be a little bit more conservative, we don't budget right up to the 800. That's $17,380. Again, that's sort of like that blended average when you look at what our, what we expect based off of the previous slide. Multiplied those two numbers, that's a total state tuition. The other category really is, the vast majority of that is entitlement grants, Title I, special education. Like, these are like federal grants that are really prescriptive, right? Like, just look at our student demographic and they just tell us what we're getting. So that is really no magic that we're doing there. That is just, it's coming straight from federal sources. And then in terms of expenses, you know, those are the six sort of primary categories that, you know, that we report to our school board. And, you know, I think, like all districts, I think we have, you know, I think we've had some challenges over the past couple of years trying to grapple with benefits increases. And I'm, I'm, I'm sure that you're feeling that at the municipal level or the school levels that, you know, you know, benefits cost increases are certainly rising faster than inflation and let alone, you know, sort of the 2.5% threshold that. And, you know, I think we are also, you know, thinking about how to manage a budget, knowing that sort of the COVID emergency funding is sunsetting and and so, you know, I think at the end of the day, I mean, we're, we're expecting our our budget to increase by, you know, 2.5% next year and. But again, it, you know, we are, we spend all of next year really just tracking, like, what is enrollment? Where are they coming from? Like, and we are looking at monthly tuition checks that come in from the state to make sure that we're sort of on course the, to land the plane as we expect it by next June.
Do you have, so, I mean, you spend pretty much, your expenses are pretty much what your income is. Do you have, like, stabilization or reserve?
We do, yeah. So we, we have about, so one of the things that, as a public charter school, go through every year, we have an independent third-party audit that we go through every summer and those results get sent to the state. And, you know, by, so both by our auditors' sort of guidelines, recommendations, but also by the state, like, they look for reserve account amounts as a function of how many months of operating budget. So the the guidelines that that were asked to stay between is anywhere between three and six months of operating budget to have in cash reserves. And, you know, we're, we're in that zone.
Hmm? Okay. Other questions? Comments? Open it up.
I'm sorry, I looked up and everybody was looking at me.
Take your time.
Okay, yeah, I have a question and a comment. So you have reserves about three to six months. If you don't charge tuition, this is just built through programs or?
So, sorry, if we don't charge tuition? So the tuition comes from the the state? Yeah?
Correct. So, I mean, the budget is relatively, maybe I'm missing it, maybe it's not here on the...
It already existed.
Oh, prior, okay. Yeah, I think, so that was my question, it got answered. My comment is, I love that we have Innovation Charter here in Tingsborough. As select person Eldridge had mentioned before, it's always a great thing that we have choices of schools. Having Innovation and the Tech and Tingsborough is always great. My sister and two of my cousins went through Innovation and I think that they had a fantastic experience there. And I love the way that your students learn because it is quite different than the traditional school learning environment. And just as you mentioned before with, you know, public speaking, community outreach, project-based learning, I think especially for kids who maybe don't thrive as much in a traditional learning environment, having the charter school here is a fantastic option. And I'm, we're very happy to have you.
Well, thank you for the kind words. You know, I mean, I think one, we have any number of families who have multiple children who were, one will attend our school, one will go to the Tech, one will go stay in the district. And and they are the first ones to acknowledge that sort of one-size-fits-all is, does not sort of match their experience on the home front. So we're, we're grateful to be part of the community and and support it in many ways.
I I have, I have no questions. You answered all my questions and she already took my thunder saying that, you know, it's good to have them in Tingsborough.
Well, I appreciate it.
Yeah, no, we we definitely appreciate you as as part of the community, what the school brings, what the students get out of it. You know, this town definitely supports schools and I, you know, always have. And that's one of the big reasons why we do have three fantastic options here. So, you know, I I think that what we're trying to do is figure out how do we keep that going and and keep improving on that. So, you know, glad that you came in. I I, I hope that we can continue to, you know, try to make it better for the students.
Yeah.
And we appreciate everything that you're doing.
Well, I appreciate the invite coming in. So thank you for all your work in the community.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Enjoy your day.
All right. Thanks. Take care. All right. Wow. All right, so Colin?
Yes.
I know you've been chomping at the bits.
I have, thank you.
So why don't we do?
Forgot why I was here. I do, before, Mr. Chair, before I dive into the Town Manager's Report, I do just want to note that Mr. Orpin mentioned an Innovation Academy intern at Town Hall. He's in our office, Adario. He's dove straight into public safety, he's looked at Public Works. This week, he's looking at Health and Human Services. And every time he does informational interviews with our department heads, they're blown away because he's not just curious about what they do. All of his interviews are designed to figure out what problems they face. And his end goal is, once he has some form of power, that he's going to be able to fix all of these. So I just wanted to give them a shout out. And Shannon Morocco from Innovation reaches out three or four times a year to our office looking for ways that their students can get involved in the community. So they certainly are a great community partner.
Fantastic. Thanks for adding that in.
With that, the Northern Middlesex Council of Governments hosted a very well-attended kickoff summit for their At Home and Great Alol initiative a couple of weeks ago, which aims to leverage local, state, and federal partners to develop a regional housing strategy to address challenges in our region. I was happy to attend and grateful to Senator Kennedy for attending as well. Yellow House Cannabis has signed on with the general contractor for the construction of their new retail marijuana establishment on Middlesex Road. They also applied for their building permit on March 19th, and our building department is working expeditiously with them to get the ball rolling on that project. Last week, the Council on Aging hosted an appreciation luncheon on Wednesday for our Highway Department. As the boards are aware, our Highway Department does much more than just maintain the roads and deal with tricky snowstorms like this surprise one we had this weekend. They also serve as a multi-service tool really for all of our department heads, particularly at the Council on Aging. So it was a great program to give back to them. The Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities reviewed our draft zoning, which was designed to comply with the MBTA Communities Act. They provided some feedback, a lot of it was very minimal, just largely procedural in terms of how they wanted us to present the information. And I know that Eric Salerno is hard at work. the information. And I know that Eric Salerno was hard at work making responses to that and editing our presentation so that it aligns. In the spirit of cooperation, our Veterans Agent Chris Derry is helping Drakett again while they search for a permanent Veteran Service Officer. We ventured into an MOA with Drakett to provide services to the town of Drakett while they recruit to fill the position. We have a great relationship with Drakett. Chris has performed as their VSO twice now in the last couple of years. So we entered a simple three-month MOA. We'll revisit it if necessary. But we know that Drakett is happy to step up and help us if necessary. So we're happy to do the same. The Police Department and Fire Department Building Assessments that were funded by ARPA and approved by this board in February kicked off last week. Our consultants were onsite at both buildings, three and a half hours at each building, doing physical assessments. They'll return for one more full physical assessment. And this week, Wednesday morning, we'll meet for a couple hours with the consultant to talk about challenges in the building, review our utility history, and then also talk about their space needs. Not a full space needs assessment like we did in 2018, looking at a new building, but really trying to understand what the space that they have today. How are they utilizing it? How would they like to utilize it? And all of that will be coordinated into a final recommendation. Our IT Director has launched a very comprehensive cybersecurity training program that involves baseline training, scenario testing, live phishing email campaigns, as some of us are aware. And those are designed to test our staff's ability to detect phishing and more. We've also installed, if you've logged into your Gmail recently, there's a new add-on to Google where you can directly from the email report something is phishing. The trainings are required for all of the users, including members of this board. So you'll get reminders from a group called No at All or No Before.
No Before.
No Before. We're going to open the yard waste site a little bit early. We'll open it on Monday, April first. There's a couple, there were a couple of small trees down over the winter across the road, and the Highway Department was hoping to dry out the backside of it so they could resurface it, just to make sure that it's ready. But that will open on Monday, April first. There's plenty of information on our website in terms of what you can and can't drop off there. And just a reminder that it's for residential yard waste only, no contractors. We are excited to announce that the registration for the community groups to utilize the Council on Aging as meeting space will open on Monday, April first. Jackie and I were doing some final testing of the online software this morning. We finally installed all of the equipment that's necessary so that the COA can operate without staff being present, which was the whole point of a no-cost rental. And you'll be able to apply online at tinsboroughma.gov. And obviously, our office will be happy to help with paper applications if necessary. A reminder that the Planning Board will commence public hearings on six proposed zoning changes on April fourth. The changes are available on the town's website, tinsboroughma.gov, under the Planning Board. There's also an additional citizens petition, which was received by the town clerk last week. Even though it's not proposed by the town, it's still required to have a public hearing, so that will be incorporated into our public hearing process. In an effort to help familiarize residents with the budget process and the proposed fiscal 2025 budget, we'll be hosting Budget Office Hours this spring. These informal meetings will take place at Town Hall and are open to anyone. They'll include a high-level presentation on the budget process and the proposed budget, and then a Q and A. We think that these smaller, more intimate meetings will provide a new, more comfortable opportunity for residents that maybe haven't been as familiar with the budget process, or want to learn more, to ask their questions before a town meeting, which can be relatively intimidating, even for us to do this professionally. We will host three of them, April tenth and April seventeenth, are both Wednesdays. It'll be at 6:00 PM. And on April twenty-third, a Tuesday, we'll do that at 5:00 PM. All of them will be here. And of course, if a resident has questions about the budget but can't attend those, they can reach out to our office for a one-on-one meeting. And then finally, just a reminder that our annual townwide cleanup will begin on Monday and last throughout the month of April, although the kits are already available. So if we have some nice weather this week and you're interested, you can pick up a kit here at the Town Hall in the library or at the Highway Garage. Pick an area of town, pick up the trash, leave the yellow bags on the side of the road, and the Highway Department will pick them up as they go around town.
Great. Thanks, Kat. Well, go ahead, and then we'll do the questions.
Just one update. Bids were due for the 2024 Road Improvement Program Phase One on Wednesday, March thirteenth. There were two bids received, and the project was awarded to the lowest bidder. All states construction in Kew is expected to start work mid-April.
Excellent. All right. I'll open up questions, comments on the Town Manager and Assistant Town Manager reports.
I have, just I use a question or maybe a comment. I sometimes spend my Saturdays going down to the firehouse, talking to either Pat Sands or Wes is around. I enjoy a conversation with them and just look around the building and just kind of get my update and go, ew, you know, the conditions aren't as robust as, you know, you'd expect a fire department to have. So meager to see that next phase of the report from that. It's, you know, these are our fire guys and gals that take care of us when we need it most, right?
Absolutely.
Houses on fire, or, oh, God forbid, you need ambulance service. Touch wood, that the ambulance has been, you know, very reliable. But, you know, some of the sleeping conditions and what they're, having to deal with, if there's an administrative offices, kind of just right there next to the TV, you know, it's like, it's a little distracting. And, you know, modular kind of growth in the building that we talked about. But it was a really good discussion, and I support Wes and Pat and the team over there a lot.
And it's worth saying, Mr. Chair, that, and I've said this before in meetings, but it's worth underscoring, those sleeping areas that Select Board Member Moran mentioned, we used federal cares funding for that, but the labor was done by firefighters.
Exactly.
The ambulance bay was constructed with funds raised by the Tinsborough Firefighters' Association and done with labor from the Firefighters' Association. So they certainly do a lot with the little. And...
They do good work.
Yeah.
It's just...
Not adequate for their needs.
Right. It's just not adequate for their needs, is what I'm only trying to say.
Yeah.
So thank you for those.
Yeah. And they're, those are a couple of examples that, I mean, that whole building, they've really done a lot, and they make do. But we do need to support them. And, you know, that's the whole purpose of this, is to figure out not just what we can do, you know, relative to the existing space, but how can we leverage the, the land around it and, and everything to optimize that? Just because, you know, there are things that, you know, when, when you're inside a building, you can say, hey, I can put up some shelves, I can do those things. But having a, an understanding of what you can do with that space to deal with the equipment that they've got outside, a lot of that is, that's where, you know, bringing in experts that can help us do those types of things is really important. And I think, you know, we talked about it when we, we funded that, that whole project. I, I didn't like the amount of money that it was, but it's going to be money well spent. I mean, unfortunately, that's what it is. I always sit there and say, ah, it costs more than I would like it to, but that's what we need. We, we have to do that because, you know, and we have those needs, not just the firehouse, but we have it at the, at the police station as well.
Sure, definitely.
Anything else? No, a lot of stuff happening. So I, residents will be able to see this online tomorrow. I'm sure I'll see it on, on X slash Twitter and Facebook and, and all those. So I encourage residents to, and they can subscribe as well to those updates. You can go on the website and see, I know there was a lot of folks said, oh, I didn't know I could do that. Well, yes, you can.
And Ronnie would be mad if I didn't remind you. You can listen to it wherever you get your podcasts as well.
Yes, podcasts as well.
If you're commuting, it'll be there.
Fantastic. All right. All right. Now back to new business. Let's go to seven C, the Fiscal Year 2025 Capital Plan.
I'm going to pawn this off on Kat in a minute, but I just want to commend Kat and the Capital Asset Management Committee. This was a tough year because our funding sources were limited. This board and the Finance Committee and Capital made it clear that borrowing was probably not a good idea this year. It was the first time that we, that capital kind of removed itself from the early stages of the process. So Kat did a lot of work with departments to refine their requests, make sure that they were providing us the information that we knew capital would want to see. And at the end of the day, you know, we had the very unenviable task of looking at a very lengthy list of capital needs and figuring out what really needed to be funded in fiscal year 2025. So I'll let Kat explain all the work, but I just wanted to give her a shout out, because this was not an easy year. But certainly, I think the process this year went very smoothly. I think capital was pleased with it. And while I would have loved to have funded more items, I think we did the best with what we could have. So, Kat.
So myself and Mr. Eldridge are here representing the Capital Asset Management Committee before the Select Board tonight to present their FY25 Recommended Capital Plan. This plan has been fully vetted by the committee and also presented to the Finance Committee on March fifth, where they voted unanimously to support it. As the Town Manager mentioned, the FY25 capital budget process began with the Town Manager soliciting department requests on October thirtieth, with requests due November thirtieth. The capital process was, as mentioned, modified this year to authorize the Town Manager to vet, review, and meet with department heads and discuss their initial requests upon using the approved criteria that we've in previous years, mostly as guidelines. So as the Town Manager mentioned, staff and the committee identified early on this fiscal year, capital, the capital budget would rely solely on free cash and ARPA funding, as opposed to any borrowing at this time, after reviewing the town's debt schedule and the middle school debt specifically. As a result, we sharpened our pencils and limited the requests to immediate needs and those that really fit within our budget constraints. With that being said, we've identified $325,000 free cash, and then using $243,000 of American Rescue Plan Act funding. And below, we have our, we have the, the plan, the seven different requests to make up the $568,000, majority of them being from ARPA. So the final step here is to have the Select Board vote to approve the recommended plan, and additionally, to have the Select Board vote to authorize the ARPA funding portion of plans, so that purchasing in these items can begin immediately. Would that take any questions about the process or any of the requests?
The question I have is, if it's okay, Mr. Chair?
Please.
Is just about the fire truck. If that's ordered fairly soon out of ARPA funds, is that a delivery for this calendar year? Or would that be next fiscal year, sometime in 2025? I'm just trying to understand. Because there is a, a big need. There's a lot of rust on that truck underneath and stuff like that.
It definitely depends on what we go with. We don't know what the lag time is on ordering that. I believe, since speaking with Assistant Fire Chief Pat Sands, that I think the sooner the better, just because there is the likelihood that there'll be some time before it's delivered.
Okay.
And any special things that we have to add on to the truck? Any requirements or not?
Yeah, the, the truck itself will probably be able to get in two to three months. I think that Pat might have already identified a couple of places that have it. And fortunately for us, we're also currently wrapping up the communications upgrade project. And so a lot of the new radio equipment that we would need to put in the truck was previously ordered and is waiting to be installed. So we shouldn't see a dramatic wait time. I would be surprised if it's more than two to three months.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify, just because it's, it is a need.
Yes, absolutely.
And that's one of the reasons why it's ARPA funds, so that it can be purchased before July one versus free cash.
I don't have any questions. Again, I just want to give a, a shout out to everybody who put hard work into this. And I know that it has been Select Board Member Eldridge's doing to really focus on here and make sure that this comes to us in an organized manner, where there are programs in place that can make this process a little bit more organized and expeditious, to make sure that everybody understands actually what is the difference between a need and a want, and how do we address them in a timely manner. So I really appreciate that. And so I just want to thank everybody who took time to put this together, because I know it's a lot of work.
And I will add, I, I'm going to differ from Colin. I thought that this was so easy, because I, we didn't have to do it.
There's the other perspective.
Yeah. No, I just, I think that the number of meetings that we had was a lot less. There was a lot of back and forth that we used to have, just trying to get to the point where we had the list of needs. And I think it's far more effective. This is one of the reasons why we thought Town Manager, that role was going to help us, is these types of things where, you know, rather than having all these discussions in open meeting, Colin and Kat could work with the department heads to say, look, this is what we have. Here's, you know, some give and take. So I know that, you know, you did a lot of work in pulling this stuff together, and I don't want to minimize that. But I think that work was far better than trying to have a committee trying to do that. And, and this is the right way to go. But I, I was very thankfully surprised when I think it was, might have been our December meeting, where I'm sitting there expecting, okay, we're going to go back and forth with some of these things. And Kat says, all right, here's what we recommend. And it was like, oh, wow. That's doable. And I was even more pleasantly surprised that the answer to my question of, okay, what are people going to be screaming about that they didn't get from this, was, no, we think, you know, everybody understands this is where it was. So I, I, I think that this is really the right way to go. And I hope that it's, because it's the first time, it might have been a little bit more work in getting that done. But I'm hoping moving forward, that it just becomes part of our normal budgeting process. Still with the oversight of capital asset and, and, you know, making sure that we're, we, we are, you know, maintaining that oversight. But I think it's just a better use of people's time. So thank you for all of the, the efforts that's there, that is there. I do think we are, the intent is that we're going to put some money into some stabilization, because we know there's some things that we've deferred that we're going to run into. I do think that we are going to have, there was a question of what do we do with money that, funding things that break mid-year. And I think the, the easy way to do that is just to go back to when we funded the financial, the Finance Committee's Reserve Fund. We stopped that, I think, last year because of budgetary reasons. But we can just fund that with the $50,000 that we had before. And we have a mechanism to deal with a $50,000 type of situation. Again, I think that's the right way to go. And, and we address those types of things. So I think this is a good plan. I think it's, it's a good process. And I think we should approve the plan and fund the, the items as requested through ARPA. And if there are no objections, I will entertain a motion.
Do you want me to take it in one motion, or should I break it into two?
Um...
Either way, it worked for us.
Okay.
Yeah.
I move that the Select Board vote to accept the recommendation of the Capital Asset Management Committee for the Fiscal Year 25 Capital Plan and authorize $243,000 in ARPA funds be expended by the Town Manager for the Fiscal Year 25 Capital Plan as presented.
Mr. Chair, I second that.
I have two motions and a second. And any further discussion on those? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Carries three zero zero. Next item, contract approval, IMA with Drakett regarding Public Safety Communications Tower.
Yes. This is a relatively simple one. Chief Russell worked with Chief Patterson in Drakett to bring this to us. As we've talked about in other contexts, we have communications equipment in multiple places, one of them being this tower that's owned by the town of Drakett. It's just something that we've done in the past, but it's obviously best practice for us to memorialize this. So included here is a very standard intermunicipal agreement between the town of Drakett and ourselves, which, at no cost to us, allows us to put our equipment over there. It's a benefit for both towns. Our town responds frequently to Drakett for mutual aid. Drakett responds frequently to us for mutual aid. And so we're able to leverage each other's ability to communicate, if you will. But this is a very lengthy, I think, 25-year agreement with the town of Drakett, which exceeds my authority. So I will need the Select Board to approve it this evening.
Straightforward. Can I, any further questions on that?
Is this the equipment debt? There's new equipment going on this? Or is this just renewal of this agreement?
This is separate side from the one where we had, where we had the new equipment going on, but one where we still have active equipment.
Okay.
That last issue kind of brought to light that we should memorialize.
Perfect.
And we may have others like that.
Correct.
Like in Westford.
Correct.
Perfect. Yep. Oh, yeah.
I move that the Select Board approve the IMA with the town of Drakett as presented and authorize the Town Manager to sign the agreement on the board's behalf.
I second that.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Carries three zero zero. Moving to the second page, snow and ice deficit. Who has that one?
I've got that one. Very simple this year. Happily, as we approach spring, and while I thought, when I drafted this memo, leave winter in the past, but of course, then we got snow this weekend, we do need the Select Board to authorize the Highway Department to deficit spend the snow and ice account up to $50,000. We're fortunate to have had a moderate winter so far in terms of snow. But I would note that we did have a substantial number of ice events that required the Highway Department to be out salting and treating roads. Of course, depending on those ti, the timing of those storms, it gets a little more expensive, because then we deal with overtime rates if they're coming in three or four hours before their shift. Looking back, though, at your snow and ice deficit approvals, this is one of your lowest years in, I think, the last six years. So, super exciting. Right now, before Saturday's storm, we were $21,000 in a deficit. We're asking to deficit spend up to $50,000. We're asking to deficit spend up to $50,000 just as a precaution. This isn't, for those that aren't familiar, this is not adding more money to the budget. We'll have to clean this up at town meeting from free cash, but this is one of the accounts that you're allowed to deficit spend with your blessing.
And we do it every year.
Correct.
As you said, this is one of the smaller ones, which is good. Any questions, comments? I'll entertain a motion.
I move that the Select Board authorize the Highway Department to deficit spend up to $50,000 from the snow and ice account for fiscal year 2024.
I second that motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Carries 300. Ratify Clerical Union MOA fiscal '25 through fiscal '27.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This board will remember, at its last executive session, it voted to approve the attached MOA for a successor collective bargaining agreement with the Clerical Union for fiscal year 2025, 2026, and 2027. The Clerical Union includes staff here at Town Hall, Council on Aging, the Highway Department, and our library staff, so it's a very unique group because we have, half of the bargaining unit has very similar jobs, and then the other half of the bargaining unit has completely different jobs. So I do want to just acknowledge the clerical negotiating team, they did a really good job this year of balancing asks and things they agreed to that benefited everybody equally. One of the things about a small town is you have very unique arrangements, but I think that this contract represents a very fair offering from the town while recognizing our budget situation in the next few years, but also showing our appreciation for the work that they do. These are the clerical positions that really support the most basic and necessary functions of town government. So there are a few very specific reclassifications over the course of three years, which came largely from a history of reclassification, but also from that, the Call and Center survey that we did in the fall that showed some of the positions were out of the range. Similarly situated, cost of living increases with other agreements that we've had, and it codifies language around insurance opt-outs and situations where an employee is eligible for FMLA, an example of how we were able to work with the union to come to a compromise on an issue that was important to them while having a very minimal budgetary impact on the town. Because you voted to approve the MOA in executive session, we do need you to ratify it publicly and then authorize me to sign the contract.
Any further questions, comments on that?
Nice work.
I will entertain a motion then.
I move that the Select Board ratify the MOA with the Clerical Union for fiscal year '25, fiscal year '26, and fiscal year '27 as presented and authorize the Town Manager to sign the contract.
Second-hand motion?
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? That carries 300. And finally, contract approval, National Grid for security camera attachment to pole.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a pretty straightforward agreement. Town Council has reviewed it. Basically, we have a wireless camera that we're looking to mount on a telephone pole owned by National Grid right at the entrance to the new yard waste drop-off site. In order to mount anything on their poles, you have to enter into their agreement. There is a one-time $240 cost that we're eligible to have waived, and we'll request that. One time is not really the end of the world. It's a 10-year agreement, so it requires the Select Board's approval. We have the insurance coverage already that they require in the contract, so we'll provide them with a copy of our certificate, and the camera operationally will just be part of the same camera system that we had installed here at Town Hall. And this is simply looking to make sure that we don't have repeat contractors dropping things off. If somebody clearly drives down the road in a pickup truck with a dishwasher and then drives back out without said dishwasher, that'd be a pretty good indicator of what they might have done.
Excellent. Excellent. Any further questions, comments on that one?
Just one question.
Please.
The type of camera, is it a solar and cellular?
Yes.
Capability, so no electricity plug-in, and it will basically charge itself with the solar?
Correct. It does have a, it will have a backup power connected to that pole, but yes, it will operate largely on the solar, and then it is cellular.
Yeah, I was just curious on how that was going to be fed, but perfect.
Correct.
Great answer.
I move that the Select Board approve the agreement with National Grid for the installation of a wireless camera at the yard waste drop-off site and authorize the Town Manager to sign the agreement on its behalf.
I second that motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I just one question for Colin. Is everybody in town who would want to put something on a pole would have to go through a similar process to get authorized by National Grid to use said pole?
Absolutely.
Thank you for the clarification.
Yes.
Any other further discussion on that? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Carries 300. Select Board Reports, I'll start to my right.
Woo-hoo.
Mix it up a little.
So I have a Select Board Report today. I'd like to wish somebody in this room a happy birthday, in case you're guessing. It's not a Select Board member, it's not Kat, and it's not Jackie, but I'll let you guess who it is. It's a big milestone birthday today. I'll leave you guessing at that as well, so happy birthday.
Twenty-one. I can finally drink, thank you.
I am so glad that you did that, because I was sitting there going, nope, I'm not going to embarrass you. I'm not going to, I was biting my tongue. I'm so glad you did that.
Y'all age.
Mr. Moran?
Just that, received some correspondence from a couple of community members. One is, to get a little closer to the microphone, so I have acknowledged that, I will sit closer to the microphone when I speak. And then, secondly, I did receive something from Robert Inglis. I'll be reaching out to you, Robert, just to talk to you about this, and then we can go from there. It's just a question of support for a country. I just want to make sure I understand more fully that viewpoint.
Thank you. So we are heading, in case anybody didn't notice, residents should know, we're heading into budget season, and we're getting ready for a town meeting. There are lots of activities that are going on, and there are ample opportunities for you to engage and understand what's happening. So I encourage people to follow the Town Manager's Report, because he identified, I know there's the budget sessions on April 10th, 17th, and 23rd. There's also the, the public hearings around the Planning Board items, I believe that's April 4th. And these are all on our website, in the calendar, it has everything that's there. There'll also be items where we'll have, before a town meeting, we'll explain the articles, but don't wait until the last minute, and don't think that, you know, you can just show up and be ready. If people are prepared and ask great questions, it really makes town meeting more valuable. But be involved. Don't just sit home and let somebody else vote for you. Everybody has a right to vote at town meeting, and I encourage you to get out and participate.
Can we say that date again, that town meeting is?
Town meeting is May 7th.
Thank you.
Yep. Yep, and then the elections are May 21st. So all the dates are there, on the website, in the calendar. Everybody get out. And with that, I will entertain a motion to go into executive session.
I move that the Select Board enter into executive session pursuant to exemption three to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body and the chair so declares, Drakett Water Supply District System Development and Road Impact Fee, and all collective bargaining units, and pursuant to exemption two to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, all non-union positions.
Mr. Chair, I second that.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, Mr. Moran?